...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
To all who have been here today, we ask that you please be with us as we go about this meeting, ask that you please be with this council, the people represented at this table, and the citizens of the town court. These things we ask and I need. Amen.
All the leaders and officers here, please.
Councilman Potts.
Here.
Councilman Beeks.
Here.
Councilman Harp.
Here.
Councilman Potts.
Here.
Line item five, approval minutes for December the ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Everybody read your minutes? Any additions or corrections? This plan of approval is read. I'm fixing up here between five and six. We've got the county mayor and Jeff Mason and Jeff Crockett and ambulance service. Jeff Mason called me the other day and he said that their station out here has got some black mold in it and it's gonna be awhile. They don't know what they're gonna do if they're gonna build another building or try to remove that or what. They wanted to know if we would let them use our fire station down there until they could get them a building and get back on the road. I told him I would talk to the fire chief. I talked to the fire chief. He said he was good with it, so we went ahead with it. So I brought it here tonight. Y'all, to get y'all's blessings. Now, are there any comments?
Well, it seems like they've done moved in it before.
Well, I gave them my blessings. You blame me for that?
Yeah, but you know...
Well, we had...
We need to have something to say about it, too.
Well, I've got a job here doing all this stuff like that and if the council don't want it, they can reject it and we will tell them to leave, but I've still got a job and it was a time and it needed to be done. And I don't need a babysitter up here. I've been here going on ten years or twenty-four years over yonder.
You don't think you should have asked us about it?
Well...
We don't, our opinions don't count?
I asked you tonight. I brought it to you here tonight, but there's times, Charlie, that when things come up that I have to go ahead with some things. There's times if sometime if something happens...
They couldn't have waited two or three more days?
Well, they wanted to get out of that building and, I mean, this is an emergency situation. It was, it's not like that it's, you're fooling with an emergency deal here and I went on and did it and I will take all the flak.
Along those lines, I got a call. We had a meeting here Monday night. I got a call after that meeting, literally in the back parking lot. The county attorney had called and indicated the same issues that they had, the mold that was present in another facility and that the county would be interested in perhaps doing a memorandum of understanding or something along those lines to make it a, I guess, a more official situation. I asked him to put that in writing, which he and I usually do, and he pretty much did that the next day. Had a chance to look at that the next day's night and I sent it to Michael. I guess it was on Wednesday, but I told the mayor and I'll tell the council. You know, certainly nothing's been done or signed that can't be...
Redone.
Redone, undone, whatever you decide to do.
And Jeff, I figured we'd have a discussion and maybe, and maybe that they would, we had talked a little bit about it, that they would be interested in maybe paying our utility for the building. And he said they thought they would.
I'm glad, go ahead. I'm glad we've got a spot for them. I hate that I found out today, I found out Tuesday night, got an email today that was dated Wednesday of last week. The email from Mr. Beller to Mr. Winkler says due to space structural issues and potentially a black mold issue. From what I was told, this is not the first time they've had the black mold issue. The ambulance service that's down there right now, structural wise, is pretty bad. Went out there and took some pictures of the shingles on the back of the building that have been up for a long time. I think it's just, it's hard for me to go into, I don't know what the county's, what's your plan? It's my question.
The plan would be is if you allow us to stay, our plan is to apply for a CDBG grant, which is open right now to do that. We're passing a resolution through the, our commission tonight. Once, and of course, you all know, we won't know whether we've got that grant until October, but the plan is to get that CDBG grant to be able to build a new ambulance station behind the Waffle House on our Baker property that we currently own. Our plans are to build at least a minimum four base stations so that we will have room for future growth for our ambulance station. We can put a rescue truck in there. We'd be more than glad, or would be, ask you guys to put a fire engine on that side of the interstate if you would like to. We'd be more than glad to do that. We're here to serve these, you know, the citizens of Goresville or citizens of the county and we just want to serve them and do the best we can for them. If that doesn't go through and we don't get that grant at that point in time, then we as a county will have to make a decision on what we're gonna do with that ambulance station.
I'm all for an ambulance on this side. I mean, I wish we could put them in every...
Absolutely.
Every, everywhere, if you see that way. I just, it's just hard for me to put this burden on the town of Goresville, but I want them here. I mean, what's the cost of a new double wide to sit back in the place of that one?
We hadn't looked at that yet because we're, like I said, we don't want to put that money into, we, it's probably gonna be about the same as a match for a CDBG grant. We think in the fifty, sixty thousand dollar range, maybe less. So we really don't want to put that money and then get that grant, you know, and waste double the money, basically.
How, how many times have we put in for the grant?
The last two ambulance stations were built on CDBG grant.
How, how many times have we put one in for the south side?
That I don't know.
Station two.
That, this is my first one. This is my first, I've been in office fifteen months.
This plan for this grant has been, has it been ongoing or is it just something that come up within the last week?
It's come up in the last week, yes, sir.
Due to the situation with the mold?
Yes, sir. And it, we created this opportunity to try to, to make something better.
I agree with that.
I was wondering too, that I've thought about is some of the live office on the town also with that.
Would that totally put in on the insurance, that insurance booked in there? Who's liable for that then? Us to pay an increase in...
Playable with an increase on the town.
If the premium increase would be on the town, I don't know that it would. If we do, if the council votes to allow them to stay, I would certainly recommend that you let us form a memorandum of understanding...
With that, yeah.
With an indemnity agreement that the county would identify the town and vice versa.
Correct.
And then your insurance and the county's insurance would be covered for the live business.
I one hundred percent want an agreement wrote in, you know, a written agreement because I don't, I don't want this to become something where somebody, somebody, some days, it's a handshake agreement and it happens and falls apart. If we've got it written, I told Brandon, I would like for it to be able to be signed off between me, Mayor Gibbs, Brandon, Jamie, and ambulance director and the fire chief.
Well, the agreement's fine, but it takes a year or two.
Correct.
It doesn't work good, we don't get the grant. The county commissioners do not approve the money for you to borrow to build a new one.
Right.
Who gets left handed holding the bag? We can't...
Y'all are worried about being...
Yeah, we can kick you out, but, you know, I just want everyone to see...
At that point in time, then, we would, we would have to do some, I mean, there's, we would have to do something with that station out there or build another station. We don't, we don't really have a choice.
Take our ambulance service away and run it out of Carthage, so therefore, we're still behind the eight wall.
I don't want to do that.
I don't either, but...
No, we will do whatever we can to keep an ambulance up here.
Well, and you can put a term on any agreement.
Absolutely.
It wouldn't be open ended, I wouldn't recommend an open ended agreement.
Back to my other statement, it's hard to go in an agreement with a county after, you know, we've, we've seen the way the county works sometimes and I know this is not under your direction.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mason, but it's just, it seems like the outcome for Goresville doesn't turn out the greatest when we deal with the county in certain situations.
The question I've got is why do you want to spend the kind of money to build a new one for the taxpayers that pay for it when you've got a place right down here that you could build a place, facility for the people to stay? You've already got a place for the ambulance.
We're not wanting to spend three or four hundred thousand dollars on your...
But you're going to.
But what we're asking to do is put in for this grant and the match side of that's all we, we...
Yeah, but that don't mean you're gonna get a grant.
Absolutely. And at that point in time, then, we would have to make a decision then to either repair this double wide or buy another double wide. But I, I just think for, for the best of everybody, if we can put in and get this grant and get it and get a new ambulance station and a new modern ambulance station that matches our other two ambulance stations, we'd be fools not to try to get it.
But why can't you do it right down there?
Do what down there?
Why can't you do it right down here where you already got a piece of property worth all the ambulance services I have?
Build a station down there?
Yeah.
Well, I can. I just, I've got to get the grant first.
Right. Another question. How long have we owned this building down here? How long y'all owned this building down here? You don't even know how many years you've owned it? Can you, you're asking us a question?
I've only been EMS director for four years. It was on prior to making, getting a job.
Okay, how long have we owned the building?
It's been owned, if I've been owned, about sixteen years.
Yeah, that's...
Okay. Y'all not upkeep nothing? You just build something new or buy something? You don't ever look at the shingles or you don't ever look at nothing to fix?
No, sir, but I mean, if you...
You let it wire completely down and you want to come and, I mean, you see where I'm coming from?
I do.
Do you think we're gonna let our fire yard down here that we've been trying to get for thirty years? We've been trying to get that for thirty years and you think we're gonna let it sit down there and the shingles blow off of it and it start leaking inside and black mold getting in because there's no freaking shingles on the building? Have y'all been down there and looked at the top of the building? Your shingles is blowed off.
Right.
When the shingles blows off, it rains in and when it does that, you get mold.
I understand.
It's always, let's just build something new for the taxpayers that pay for it. You don't never try to keep something up. You gotta keep your stuff up.
Okay. If you remember correctly, I came into office and we were, had a major cash issue.
I understand that and you, and what did y'all do to this?
We raised the taxes to pay the bill, to pay the bills, not for new stuff and so, right, I agree with you one hundred percent. It's not, and I would not, I'm not asking to build an ambulance station on the taxpayer dime. I'm trying to get a grant, which is what...
You can't even apply for the grant right now. It's not time.
Yes, it is.
I thought you told me October.
No, October's when they're announced.
Oh, okay.
No, we're passing a resolution tonight through the county commission to proceed to apply for this CDBG grant that the other two ambulance stations were built on.
I'm just saying, if you're gonna build something, you gotta keep it up.
Absolutely, I agree. And that's what we do, which is what we're doing.
Yeah.
We're working...
You also told us that you weren't gonna be, that you weren't gonna run on getting any more grants, that she was done with that. You told me that, you're safe.
I understand, okay. So I'm not supposed to go get this CDBG grant that's a...
Well, you could do some repairs down here on this one or you, I mean, you know, you can't, when you, when you get somebody coming there...
But what I'm saying, Charlie...
...and you think they're gonna tell you.
What I'm trying to say to you, Charlie, is, is for the same money, I can try to match a grant for, for the next nine months and...
Is there, is there already memorandum rolled up?
Yes, sir.
Uh... What, I mean, I would like to see a plan if it's, I mean, I, the building that's down there, the extra two bays, y'all don't use those for anything else, correct?
With storage right at the mall.
If that were an option, could you remodel those and, I just, I hate handcuff or firemen. I know they're not gonna say that it's a hindrance, but they're not gonna want to go down there when two guys or two people have been working twenty-four hours. I just, you know, and I'm all for, but I would like to weigh out every option.
If you, if you guys don't want us there, we'll figure something out.
That's not what we're saying, Mr. Mason. We're not saying that at all. That's my, I'm just one person. I'm just the only one. I just would like to see what the cost of a new double wide or what it would cost to...
Yes, sir. I was just gonna say, have y'all looked into, is there anything that you can do to that existing one now? I mean, have y'all looked about, see how much it might cost?
We have some quotes, yes. It's about thirty, just shy of thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand. To clean up mold?
Wow.
Can I put a bid in with it?
Sure. If we want to go to bid with it, yeah. We just, I mean, that's an estimate.
But for what you would spend cleaning up the mold, you could match the grant and get rid of the place.
That's, that's, yes. That is, that is our plan, yes.
Charlie, there's more to cleaning up that mold than just cleaning up...
What do you think I do all the time? What do you think I do for a living?
We, we did courthouse over years and years ago over there. It cost us fifty thousand dollars just to do that courthouse over there. A government building is more, is a little bit different. There's more to it than, than, than what just takes in a house.
But you gotta keep your stuff up. You gotta keep your stuff up and I'll let you go.
That, that is their business. They, they need to do that. We need to take care of ours and let them there and I think we are, we should obligate them here and help them and, uh, do I need a motion for this?
Yes, sir.
I would like to have an entailing motion that, that we will go into maybe a contract with them for a temporary deal and that, like you said, that Jeff and Jamie and Brandon and we'll come to an initial agreement.
I see that.
I need a motion.
I'm like rushing.
I need a second.
My second.
Roll call.
Last mayor's office.
Is it open for discussion?
Yes, sir. The motion and second, so open for discussion.
I would like to, I mean, I would like to know what that was. I mean, I don't...
We're looking...
No...
I'm telling you, Jamie.
I mean, what, what you could do is allow us authority to come up with a proposal as far as a memorandum with, if you choose to, a temporary stopgap to allow it to stay until we come back and we work diligently and have that for you, certainly by next month's meeting.
Right, that's all.
And we would have a, an actual document, memorandum of understanding for you to look at and review, go back and forth, see what they're willing to do as far as sharing in some of the expenses and make sure insurance language and indemnity language is where it needs to be and that you'd have that to see and approve. So really, the motion would be for us to, to meet and come up with a proposal for this council to consider. And that's, I think the mayor would have to have your vote on that before he could sign it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And then if you, if next month you look at it and it's not appropriate and you don't believe that it's suitable, or you want changes, then we'll make those changes. If you think it's a thumbs down, then you vote against it and we've got to find alternate arrangements.
I'd just like to trust that you weigh all options. I'm, I mean, I'm all for whatever. I just don't want to poke and hole at a grant and it not go through. That's the only thing. I just want a definitive plan that, you know, we're gonna try every option, see what that costs, see what it costs to remodel that twenty-eight for twenty-eight building to put some temporary...
The, I mean, the memorandum itself, while it's not, it would be much like a lease. It would have a term in it. It would have what responsibilities for maintenance and upkeep on the building for each party would be and the most important thing being a term and time limit on what it is.
Which will have to be approved by us.
Absolutely.
Again.
Absolutely.
Well, I just don't want to put it off another month if it's something that we don't have to put off another month.
Well...
I know next month we'll need to vote on the memorandum. I know that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I think we need to probably a little time to come up with a document that everybody's satisfied with because that, that's what's gonna control this when, when it comes time for us.
Basically, right now, we're voting for a month.
You would vote for a month and give us authority to speak with the county to develop a memorandum to bring back to human favor. Would be my thought.
Can I have a roll call then?
I have something. Is that gonna give each echo with time enough to come up with something or...
Councilman will work, do what you need to get done. Just, we realize that the nature of the problem and we want to work as expeditiously as possible to get an agreement between both sides where it's fair to everybody and it's clear and understandable. I don't want, we won't do that, so we'll get it done.
I don't, I don't think there's any problem getting a draft by next month.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Last mayor's office.
Yes.
Councilman Beeks.
Yes.
Councilman Vantris.
Yes.
Councilman Harp.
Yes.
Councilman Potts.
Yes.
She cares.
Y'all go.
All right, thank y'all.
Line item six, police report. She's letting do this, he said. Okay, we'll let her.
Thank you. I have to follow him over to the county commission meeting, so. I handed out in all of your packets there. First of all, I'm Erica Evil. This is a...
My name's Rick Gerrels. We're both members of the Keeps Smith County Beautiful Committee.
We basically do beautification projects throughout the county, trash cleanup days. I think you have a flyer for upcoming Martin Luther King Cleanse Day. We're a volunteer organization and we basically are just trying to keep, Keeps Smith County Beautiful is the name of it. We kind of came up with a plan. Rick did.
Well, you know, we all together came up with an idea of a program that's similar to the Adopt a Highway program that the state has in place now where people can adopt or stretch a highway and, and clean it up. And so we thought about coming up with our own program, a Smith County program, and we called the Smith County Clean Street Program and this is one of the signs. And it's a sponsorship program where if a family or business wants to, to sponsor a stretch of, of street, if it's in the city or highway, you know, if it's outside the city, they can do so and then they would be also recognized for being a part of cleaning up their, their community. We want to try to kick this off this spring and, and we'd like to kick it off in Gordonsville if we can. That's why we kind of came to you guys to talk to you about it tonight and, and see what you think about it, get your thoughts. The initial sponsorship is a hundred dollars and that pays for two signs and then some, that's for a year period. And it's kind of set up similar to Adopt a Highway where you, the family or organization would clean the area at least four times a year. You know, they could do it as many times as they want, doesn't matter, but at least four times would be kind of the, the expectation, but...
We have kind of just set before you kind of a draft of how we kind of imagine this to work.
You're gonna put things on city streets or county roads?
Um, that's why we kind of came to you guys for the, the city, we would need, you know, your approval for, and possibly your help installing the signs because we're not as an organization able to do that. The signs will be paid for through the program. I'm not sure what it would cost you guys to install them. On county roads, of course, we'd have to have the road department there install those.
But this would give you people in neighborhoods an opportunity to maybe sponsor their block street or, or what have you, you know, businesses. Subsequent years, if you stay involved in the program, would be twenty-five dollars because the sums are already paid for and that would go towards...
Supplies like guides and...
Yeah, vests and safety stuff as far as that goes and supporting the Keeps Smith County Beautiful Program.
Neither one of us are lawyers. We kind of tried to model it off of another program in, we'll say it...
Yeah, I called the state and, and asked them what counties they have that kind of stand out as far as having their own programs and, and this is sort of based off one of those counties that they, that they provided me with, but...
We're not asking you to make any decisions tonight, just kind of keep in mind, look at it.
Just kind of introduce your idea.
And we welcome your feedback. We would love feedback from you. If there's anything you've noticed that's a concern that we didn't think of, like I said, we're not lawyers, so.
Would you, would you want city personnel or town personnel to actually make the installation? And maybe that that's what the council would want if somebody's gonna put something up on a street.
I would think, yeah, we don't have the ability to do that, so I would think that, and especially in a liability standpoint, if it's on a right of way or city property, you would want it done correctly. You don't want me installing it. So...
But, yeah, that would be the only thing the city would be...
Would that be the ultimate expense for the town?
I believe that would be the only expense that I can think of.
Do you provide the materials for that?
We could. We're, that's just kind of feedback is if we could maybe get an estimate of what something like that would cost. I just, I don't know.
So certainly the sign and possibly...
The sign itself is paid for by the program.
Yeah, they would be paid for by the sponsor of the...
So possibly the post and whatever it is to...
Yeah, just the post and installation, basically. But...
We do have a few businesses that are already kind of, like, kind of talked to some people. They're interested in sponsoring it. It's, it's good PR for them. It's good for the street around them to have that picked up. We would ask them to have about four, four days a year where they kind of have a big pickup day.
And we might coordinate that with some of our cleanup days to, to where we can come by and pick up the, pick up the, you know, whatever they pick up on the street and stuff.
But we just wanted to come and show it to you guys and just, we offer any, we are willing for any feedback, so.
Do you guys have any questions right offhand?
Concerned about it.
Now, how much distance or whatever, because that's another thing too, like how many signs are gonna be...
Yes.
It'd be two signs per, per sponsorship area and when you sign up for it, we'll have a, a form that you'll sign up and you can, you can choose, you know, like a block or three blocks or a mile. You know, we start off with a block or a mile, you know, so they can kind of choose.
I see what you're saying. You don't want it like every other way.
That's another thing, how many times, you know, like if we had an idea of like...
A block's a little small, actually.
Yeah, you know, if we're looking at a half mile, so we're, we can estimate that it's gonna cost this, you know, the town this much if every sponsorship was taken out to, you know what I mean? So that's why I was just curious as to how, how far...
Nothing's set in stone, so that's a good, that's good feedback, yeah.
We can look at, at posts to where it would cost to, to purchase a bundle of posts, you know, so that all you, all you guys, if you were able to, would be just to install, you know, how long it would take to install.
And you could budget for a maximum, like in a space of a year, ten a year, forty a year.
I don't think you'd want them real close because I know, I live on Short Road. I don't know if, you see what I'm saying? I don't know if this organization needs to be right next to this organization, you know, you probably have, I'm sure you have a map of some sort, we just say...
We have a website we're working on and we could put an interactive map on there that would kind of show where the different posts are, the different signs are located, maybe try to spread them out a little bit more.
I know in Goresville, you know, a mile is a pretty good little street, so I wouldn't want to get it within the block, but that's just an idea, you know.
And ideally, we want people to clean as much roads as we can.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, believe me, I do too.
Yeah.
Well, this is also just kind of a way to take pride in your community, you know, and be recognized for it as well, you know, so we would put whoever's name, family or business here as well, so anyway.
If y'all just want to keep in touch with us and I don't know what process we'd need Um, if y'all just wanna keep in touch with us and I don't know what process we'd need to go through. Come back another month, that's fine with us, so. If there needs to be anything official or voted on, I don't know. Uh, probably 'cause there would be possible installation.
I, I think they would have...
Putting signs up.
I think they would have to adopt, make a motion to adopt the program.
Okay.
And, uh, and maybe set some parameters within the town.
Sure.
State road, it may need state approval.
I wondered that too. That's what I was thinking. Yeah, I don't, that, that may be as easy as...
Well, if it's, if it's a state road, then they can, then we can...
We can put them through the Adopt a Highway program.
Yeah, we could get them to adopt a highway and they can take care of all that.
His council controls municipal, the municipal roads, but there are state roads in the municipalities.
Right, right.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate what you do.
Line item six, police report. We don't have police for here tonight.
Assistant chief asking today if we're delivering on the page. And I had, I had looked at it and I've got a, a call in. I'll have to defend to answer.
Boy, anything else on the police? Line item seven, fire report. We do have chief here.
I'll ask you a little question. How's that been going thus far with, uh, you guys, what you do in the ambulance service?
It's been fine. Um, I've been in EMS with him for eleven years. I know all sorts of things down there. Like, like I asked Mr. Crockett, clean, don't throw stuff up, you know. Everything's been great. I don't have a problem with it, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, we talked this over. This one just brought up. We just didn't bring this out and run it out and made their, this here was brought up. Jeff called me. I told him I'd talk to him. I talked to Daniel. And then Daniel said he had no problem with it. And so we went back. I mean, and I told him, I said, now we'll have to bring it up when the council makes money.
No, my, my main thing was is, is I didn't wanna go by car.
Right.
Maybe tell me the night it took you eighteen minutes to get slasher. I can't deal with that. Um, can't deal with it.
I applaud everyone in the situation. That's not what I'm saying. It's just that, the, this is the town of Gordonsville.
Yes.
This is not all, this is not our problem total. So, I mean, I applaud, I've told you that in person. I applaud the mayor doing the right thing. Yeah, that's not what I'm saying, so.
Y'all didn't need to know, but like he said, it wasn't a murder situation.
Sure, yes. If hands or butts about it.
There was never any implication. Well, I was told that it was, they didn't understand it as anything but temporary at the time. That was first words and the council needed to hear about it, so.
Anything on the fire?
Um, the only really thing I've got, I have sent Union Six to Mercer Pearl to get work on. They failed pump testing again. Um, the company we was using, um, they just didn't wanna work. So, I've sent it to Mercer Pearl to Mid-South. Mercer's equipment, I hope it'll be back this week. He's went through it and I've worked on a lot of stuff on it, so it should be back to you right. Doesn't matter how it is.
Gotta keep them running. They're no good if they don't run.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
My careful.
Line item eight, financial statements.
Mr. Pearl will be back on the twenty-first to conclude our audits.
Any comment on this financial statements? Line item nine, city recorded report. Line item ten, audit committee report. Jamie.
Um, there was a matter that was referred to the, uh, audit committee, uh, three members of that committee. And I guess since that matter was preferred, we had, they had three separate meetings. The first one, of course, had a lot of formation issues, election of chair, vice chair, secretary. And then the complaint itself was considered. I, in case the full council did not have a copy, I've got a copy of the complaint itself coupled with the, uh, the findings of that, uh, committee. And I'm happy to read that. I know it's been provided. If you'd like for me to, I can read the complaint and the, and the findings. But, um, we're prepared to, or they are prepared to send those findings to the, um, comptroller, as he was present at one of the audit committee meetings and asked for it. Um, as part of the findings, uh, they didn't find any evidence of illegal payments. All payments were approved by the, uh, by the council and included in council budgets. That simply the purpose of the complaint. The minutes, and I've got copies should the full council wanna see. In most every situation, uh, the particular payment at issue was addressed specifically in the minutes. There were a couple of occasions where it was not in all candor. Um, in the two thousand sixteen budget year, there was this recording at a work session that specifically mentioned the payment at issue. And then, uh, two thousand and eighteen, uh, they haven't shown a worksheet during a work session. Those, there weren't even necessary tapes that we could, we could find. Work sessions aren't always recorded, shouldn't be. Uh, there was also a question about mileage claimed. Uh, the committee did not find any discrepancies in that. However, uh, it was apparent through their investigation that the mileage sheets themselves, there's, there's really nobody to sign them when they come in. Uh, because, uh, the office of the mayor and, um, whomever else would submit a mileage sheet. So, from now on, much like the ABC looks at business reviews each quarter, the audit committee will meet each quarter and will review those mileage sheets, check the mileage and raise any questions. And then the chairman of the mile, of the audit committee will sign off on those mileage sheets each month.
Question about that?
Yes, sir.
Does payment need to be withheld until they're reviewed?
Probably need to pay after they're signed. Yes, sir.
Would, would we have to meet though? I mean, could we not sign them at council meetings? I mean, I just thought people have to wait four months to get paid.
You could, you could if you chose to do that. Sure. Otherwise, they get a quarterly payment for their mileage.
Yeah.
But, we'll be fair about that. But with a quarterly meeting, that's when they would get signed. But that, I couldn't recommend a payment be issued without that signature on it. So, um, that may be a practice the committee needs to look at to change something. The, uh, the other thing was there was a, the committee recommended to go ahead and have a full review of the charter that presently exists for the town. There may be some other changes to avoid any confusion or any problems, uh, in the future. And, uh, it may be that the best scenario, the problem is your legislature will come into session. It's not already, will come in very soon into session. And, uh, you have to change that by private act. And to get to that private act, you have to have an ordinance for the town of Gordonsville that requires two readings and public hearing. So, it may be that if we're not prepared to look at that necessarily tonight, that you might consider a work session to just look at the charter to see if there's some changes that need to be made. And if you're gonna do that, I'd recommend you do that very quickly because I would think we would probably have to have that private act submitted, a proposed private act submitted by March at the latest. So that doesn't give us a whole lot of time. And you're probably looking at possibly a special call meeting to get that ordinance passed. But, um, they, the audit committee looked at this thoroughly. They looked at it on three different occasions. Interviews were done, um, documents were looked at. Can provide the full council with anything that they requested, that they wanna see as a result of this. But, um, they voted on the findings and that's, that's where we stand. Any other questions that we hear? The chief, y'all answer them.
Did you give them all a copy of?
No, but I...
Is that something with the charter? I don't know if that's correct, but is that something we'd wanna put in task, consult with them on that?
We certainly could, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that something you recommend? The, the charter needs to be okay?
In fact, that's probably something we should look at periodically. It's probably not every year. It's something that they should be looked at periodically, uh, because it is, I mean, just like anything else, it's a document that can be... The last time we altered the charter, we used to have three readings and a public hearing on every ordinance. And most municipalities have gone to two. So that was the last time we did it and that's probably been, I don't know, it's like, oh, about six years ago, maybe. Um, and that's worked out really well. So, it's not unusual to, uh, to do that. But, um, and I think in this instance, it's, it's worth looking at 'cause there are some, some simple changes that could be made that could really help going forward. I, you know, the committee nor frankly did I find anything incorrect with what was done here based on, and you'll see the, the figures in the back of what was actually paid during each term. And please remember, the mayor started a new term in two thousand and sixteen. So, that office started a new term. What was done before could certainly be done after two thousand and sixteen. And overall compensation did not exceed, um, the regular is, I think with meetings at fifty dollars a meeting, it's approximately thirty thousand dollars a year is, uh, what would be considered a base. And it's been that way for decades as far as, but, um... Any, any further questions?
So we just need to schedule a work session.
Whatever is good for y'all. Is that just the committee or the full council?
No, it's the full council.
So who, uh, who did you say needed to be here?
In task.
We have a representative, Mr. Jack.
Is that Mr. Jack?
Mm-hmm. On the segment, he could, if we do that, I think. He, he comes quite often, so.
Right.
I was just asking.
They, they actually go through it and tell you. We can't tell you this is what you need to do, but this is what you need to do.
Yeah, I don't think since I've been here that I've...
He's been here once.
Recently, yeah, not, not a while. That's what they do. I mean, that's what they do, so.
The municipal technical is out of service and it's, they're excellent, they're excellent resource, reliable company.
We're just calling him so he can come and then...
Okay. Just have to give enough time to ad, if you don't set it tonight, you have to advertise it for a week.
Everybody touch base with Michael in the next few days, maybe. That work for you, Michael?
And I'm not, I hate to put a rush on something like that, but with our time constraints, otherwise we're stuck with the next legislative year.
Which is something we're gonna make a special call at the end of February.
But if he...
Cause this is just your work challenge. And you could have your first reading of the ordinance hopefully, if the council wanted to, in February. We're probably looking at a special call for that for anything else you had to put on.
Take out a charter. They, it's on the internet. It's on In Task's website. So, they know, they're familiar and I can't imagine, I don't know how many pages their charter is 'cause I can't imagine it's very...
It's about thirty pages.
...in depth, you know, so.
I got a copy. But it's, uh, and it, and it wouldn't be an overhaul. We're not talking an over, we're just, there's some tweaks that certainly need to be looked at. One of which was, was brought up through this that can be, that will eliminate any issue in the future.
Any new business?
I would like to add one small thing. Us knowing about the EMS situation, the emails that we received today at ten o'clock, they were dated, uh, from Mr. Winkler to Gord City, which is the town of Gorns on January eighth. And from Mr. Winkler to Jamie on January seventh. It'd be nice to have those before the, before a week later. Is that correct? I mean, did I say that right? Addressing the situation.
That's my fault. I just said that as a courtesy. I figured everyone already knew about it. So I would've sent it out sooner if I knew no one had no idea, so. I don't, I don't think they hear them much.
Any old business? Any movement, Gary?
What's the other day?
Second day.
Eighteen second, but, um, I was saying, but, Art, all the papers they had?
Uh-huh.